Okay, six o'clock. I call the meeting to order, please. Finally, right to no law, meeting checklist. As chairman of the select board through the COVID-19 coronavirus strike emergency order for the fall pursuant to executive order 2020 04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to meetings, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with emergency order, there is to confirm that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other means. We're utilizing Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform and the public has access contemporaneously if necessary to participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, 1-646-558-8656, and entering meeting ID 83448998644, and the password 534667, or by entering the name information for the same information through Zoom, Z-O-O-N dot U.S., or providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously have noticed to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom. Instructions are provided on the Town of Lee website at leadymunichure.org. C, providing a mechanism by the public to alert the public body during the meeting if they are up to speed with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-659-5414. D, adjourned the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled another time. Please note that all votes that are taken during the meeting shall be done by roll call. So let's start this meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, also states whether there is anyone in the room during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Mr. Bugby?
I'm here by myself, and could we ask everybody to mute their mics? Because I'm getting feedback.
Yeah, if you're not speaking, please mute your mic. Need to speak for some reason, raise your hand or do something, and then of course we could, the host, I think, is the town administrator at this point can unmute you. Mr. Brown?
I'm alone.
And you're here, yes. Well, of course, I'm alone, and I am here by myself. Thank you all for coming. First order of business is Linda Reinhold, town clerk, tax collector. Are you there, Linda?
Yes, I am. And I believe Don and the, it looks like some of the supervisors are too. In regards to following place locations this September and November, we're proposing that in September, we would like to still have the election at the safety complex, mainly because that is a very, usually a very slow election. Over 2012, 14, and 16 averaged about 600 people to vote. 2018, I'm not sure what happened, but 1,119 voted. With the COVID, I'm guessing that maybe half the people might want absentees. So, you know, even at the most, we probably have 400 to 500 people over the 10-hour span. So we figured we can utilize the safety complex and accommodate, with the accommodations that we have to do and everything. The November one, however, we're looking to, we'd like to have it at the school.
Any comments from the police chief?
No, none at this time.
Okay. Fire chief?
No, none.
Okay. Select board?
Linda, can you talk to me about what kind of precautions you guys are going to use?
Uh, yeah, I think Don can talk to that too. Is he there?
Oh, me, Don? Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, there. Did you want to talk to the precautions?
Well, you know, I think the most important thing is that we have the right space and the right kind of flexibility. We're still, you know, several months out, and I don't think we're going to have to reinvent the wheel here in Lee. I think there's so many other towns that are working on the same kinds of situations that will have the right kind of technology and protective devices in place when the time comes. And I, you know, I still think we're a little premature in actually trying to outline what that will look like at this time. Because like I say, the state is working on it, and other towns around us are all working on a system. And I agree with Linda about these spaces. Certainly, the safety complex for the September election and the school for the November election make the most sense for flexibility and the size of the facility that we need. As far as constructing Plexiglas booths and other kinds of things, I think we have a little time to see before we engage in those kinds of planning at this point. You know, we'll know a lot more in a month than we know now about what's going to be required by the state. So I'm comfortable with just outlining the space for now. And, you know, we have some of the concerns that we're working with, of course, is a staff of ballot clerks and others who are right in the target for the most critical sort of risk of the coronavirus. So we need to, we'll certainly need to do our homework, and I'm sure we'll all be putting our heads together on that as we, as time goes along.
Can I ask a further question in terms of what's the status with absentee ballots? Can anyone get one? What's the latest on that?
Yes, anyone can get one, and they can state that the coronavirus is, they're putting coronavirus under the disability category for the reason that you can get an absentee ballot. So yes, anyone can get one.
All right. Thank you.
I think if I could just comment again, a lot of things that the state could deliver to us could make things a lot more simple, especially in September where the, you know, you have to, it's a, it's a primary. So both undeclared Republican and Democrat need to state when they come in. And then we've had this thing where they have to change back, undeclared have to change back to another party or this, but the state may be working on some ways that we can simplify and reduce the amount of FaceTime we need with each voter coming through, I hope.
Sounds good. I don't have any problem with that. How about you, Mr. Brown?
Problem at all.
Mr. Bugby?
No, I'm fine with their suggestions.
All right, then let's proceed. We'll have the September one inside the public safety complex and the national one inside the Massway School.
Good.
Thank you. Anything else on this subject?
No, I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item number three. Reopen a little bit of the park for organized sports under the state guidelines for youths and amateur sports. First up on the list is Matt Claude. You have the floor.
John, excuse me, I think Bambi Miller wanted to speak to the election item.
Oh, thank you. Bambi?
Yes, um, there is something that I think we need to move forward with. Apparently, there is, we have to pass something to say and statement about not getting to change and do an, if you do an absentee ballot, you can still vote, come and vote, and you can't open the absentee ballots until a certain time. And we can set that so it's only two hours, so we can start opening absentee ballots two hours after, but we need to notify that in information that goes out. So I want to make sure that we at least do that instead of having to start in the afternoon and.
Thank you very much. Let's proceed down to item number three, please. Matt?
We are in the planning phase of returning to some form of, I shouldn't say normalcy, but at least play. We've put out a registration for our baseball participants, and we've had enough interest to offer a program that would be appropriate for the Little River Park field. So we wanted to revisit the use of that starting in mid-June and continue on based on recommendations from the state.
Steve, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
How's the field?
That field's all right. All the fields are okay, except for the sheep field with the little dry spell that we've had. That field's turned brown, so we're trying to keep people off of that one. But Stevens Field's all right, and then the other two fields at Little River Park are okay.
Mr. Brown and Mr. Bugby?
Matt, could you clarify which field or fields are you looking to use, sir?
Currently, we are only anticipating the need for the baseball field at Little River Park. And that's in the immediate next couple of months. Starting in August, there might be some expanded need based on where everything goes from now until then.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
No, I'm okay. I've got, I guess, just some reservations, just the personal things, but if they feel good about it, Steve say the fields are okay, then let's proceed.
Town administrator, where are we with the MOU?
You're still muted, Julie.
Are you there, Julie?
Yeah, sorry about that. The spacebar wasn't working. So you may recall at the last meeting, the board decided not to renew the MOU and to put that on hold until July or August. So right now, we don't have an agreement with anybody to share in the maintenance of the field or schedule what goes on at Little River Park.
And Matt? We have last year's.
We do.
I mean, I'm just saying, we have last year's. You know, we could, we could look at that and see if we just extend it for X days until everything gets back to a norm.
Yeah, we could do that.
Matt, when did you say you want to start your spring activities?
Well, a big decision was if we were going to have access to the field. So if we had immediate access, we probably would try to start the absolute earliest would be next week, but there's a potential of the week following.
Mr. Bugby, do you have any comments?
Um, no, I don't think so. I don't think so. I think we need something in place if we're going to have people using the fields. There's something coming up a little bit later about, what is it, the violin fiddle instructor? So I think we kind of need something, so.
I guess at this point, we need to review the MOU. I'm going to put it on hold for now until we have a chance to review it. And can we put this on the next agenda? Meeting time?
We can. I don't necessarily want to speak for the three gentlemen, or actually two, because the one is here to talk about fall, who are anxious to get going with something. If the board waits on this decision another two weeks, then I think they're going to lose all of June in terms of the ability to get on the fields and start practicing.
All right, so let me ask the question quickly. Do you see any issues?
With having them on the fields?
No, with the MOU.
Uh, no, other than what we had talked about two weeks ago, or whether it was four weeks ago, two weeks ago, I can't even remember, but I would feel more comfortable if we put some language in there about if the town wanted to get out of the agreement, that we could do it in a shorter amount of time than two months. But other than that, we could certainly use the one that we've had in place last year.
Matt, is that possible?
Um, yeah, it is. We've actually initiated our normal treatments between the time of March and now. I was not aware that it had lapsed completely. So we actually had Hillside out there doing their annual things at the time when it should have been done. And that would be no problem with me to get it going.
So Julie, can you insert that language?
Yes, yep.
If that's going to happen, then Massway and Stevens Field need to get fertilized because they haven't been done yet this year.
Well, we're only talking about Little River Park right now.
Yeah, but if you go by the MOU, they're supposed to do those two fields too.
Well, I mean, I suppose I could throw some language in relative to the situation we're in now, unless the select board wants to open up all the fields.
How about the other fields? Steve?
They can be played on.
John, can I ask Matt a question?
Please.
But I think Larry has his hand up, so I don't know if you want to take him first or not.
Go ahead, Larry.
My suggestion would be it would not be unreasonable to extend the existing MOU because we've been asked to take a look at those. We haven't had a chance to at this point. And then incorporate Julie's recommendations with that. I think that would be very reasonable at this time.
Thank you, Larry. Mr. Bugby?
Can we ask, Matt, do you have any intention of using those other fields during the summer months?
We are stepping very slowly right now, getting back into programming. So there are a lot of unknowns. Right now, we're in phase one of the amateur youth sports guidelines. We're anticipating a phase two to come. Phase two would loosen some things up, allow for slightly larger groups. And once that happens, there's a potential for a need. But we're trying to be as careful as we can, plan for the easier things first, and then move into potentially more or larger things in the future. So right now, we know that we would have a need based on the preregistrations we've done for our baseball program, and there's a potential need moving forward, but right now, it's not concrete.
May I make a proposal that the MOU that was in place, which expired, I think, in April? How about if we extend it through to August 31st of this year and add that phrase that Julie suggested putting in? That will get you through the summer, and then come back to us when you have more idea in terms of what you want to do in the fall, and we can talk about it again. Would that be acceptable to you, Matt?
I'm trying to think about the ramifications of that specific timing. So through August 31st would put us right at the beginning of our large fall season. We historically had a lot of use at Little River Park during the fall seasons and potentially more use this year. We've got a member of our football coordination group on the call here. So if there was going to be a change at that date, that would cause the potential of a lot of scheduling issues at that time. So that's one thing that would concern me for that specific timing.
All right. Well, the only issue I'm saying is in terms of getting you through at least the summer, because I expect when you find out what your needs are going to be in the fall, that we're going to have conversations in July and August about the next whatever, and the next renewal is and what those details are. That was my only reason for picking August.
No, I get that. I would almost say August 1st might be a better time to reevaluate than August 31st.
That's fine.
Because that would still allow a little bit of planning. We know that we would be okay through June and July, even though some baseball is planned on going through into August. August is really the transition from our summer things into our fall things.
That's fine.
All right, Mr. Brown, you got any comments?
No, I'm good.
All right, let's go with the suggestion that this is an August, but we'll extend the existing MOU to August 1st revisitation, and the town administrator will add that language with respect. And what was the language again, Julie? So we get up.
It's going to be relative to something along the lines of the town can terminate for cause, and we'll, I'll put something in, some examples of what cause might be.
Do we need a vote, or are we just, okay?
No, you're okay.
All right. Sounds good. So we're going to move forward with this issue. Next one, Tom, Oyster River Youth Association Football Coordinator. Are you there?
Yes, I'm right here. How are you guys?
Hi.
Hi. So first of all, thanks for having me today. Tom Giolussis, I am the lead coordinator for the advisory group for ORYA football. Let's see, as we were starting to plan for the fall season, some of the coaches requested a change of venue for our practice facility this year. Historically, we've been practicing out at Woodridge, and we've been playing our home games over at the university. Woodridge is less than desirable in terms of practice for a number of reasons. One, it's just, it's super damp out there, as we all know. You know, it's a former swamp, you know, so it's soggy, the grass grows really quick, super buggy. Little River came up. So we looked into Little River through ORYA, and they didn't seem to have an issue with us practicing out there or getting some time out there. And we started discussing, you know, what we need for practices, and one of those things is lights. It was at that point, I think it was, I'm pretty sure it was Matt at Mac Claude, who suggested that Little River did not permit the use of lights, but that I reached out to Julie Glover. So I did, and Julie said that we'd have to bring this to your attention to see if we might be able to get, you know, at least a temporary permit or temporary use of lights permitted for us out there. We, you know, so typically in the fall, we're practicing two, sometimes three nights a week. And out at Woodridge, we've rented lights. Usually, we get the lights delivered about the middle to late September, and we use the lights for, you know, the duration of October mostly. And the lights are off by eight. So really, that's what we're seeking right now, is we're looking to, you know, we'd like to move our practice venue, but to do so would be silly if we couldn't use lights out there, because we can at Woodridge. And then it also, it was brought to my attention that lights were permitted, I guess, at Stevens Field last year?
Not exactly.
They weren't permitted. They were in use.
They were there. They were in use.
Okay. So yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, we didn't want, we didn't want to go that route and get permission to, you know, use the fields and then bring in lights, you know, without the permission, so we figured we'd start early. You know, again, the units that we rented for Woodridge, you know, I mean, they're diesel units, they're not terribly loud, they would be directed towards the field of play, and again, a couple nights a week for just a short stint.
Well, this is my opinion, not the rest of the board's opinion. I'm not enthusiastic about lighting up Little River Park or lighting up any sport field. I look at Little River Park as more pastoral in the sense of no lighting to affect anybody else around the neighborhood. So I'm not enthusiastic, but I'll listen to the other two select persons, see what they have to say. Mr. Brown or Mr. Bugby?
Well, I guess my issue is going to be, you know, if we have three different organizations, but the basic rules have to be the same. I mean, I think we've had others that asked for lights, we turned them down. I realize it's field-specific, maybe. All I'm wanting to say is, is that the basic rules for, have to be common, if you would, across all the organizations.
I think Karen Rossi wants to speak.
You have the floor, Ms. Rossi.
Thank you. Last year, I don't know what organization it was, but they used lights at Stevens Field, and we had a couple of different incidents with planning board and zoning board meetings that the kids were there after dark, cars came down the road, kids were in the road, cars were backing out, leaving the planning board meeting and the zoning board meeting, and kids were there with the lights. I think that the light, the Stevens Field, I don't know who it was, it doesn't matter who it was, should not be allowed because we use, it's a public safety complex with emergency vehicles and meetings with the lights. It brings the kids after dark, and it's just not safe, in my experience with planning board and zoning board. Not speaking for the police chief or fire chief.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, or Mr. Bugby?
Hello. I'm not totally against it. I have a couple of questions for Tom, if I could.
Sure.
Tom, so these are generators, they're self-contained, you don't need any power or anything, correct?
That's right.
It's also, in my understanding, because I used to play football, football players love mud, so I'm not sure why your players don't like mud, but, so that was my other thing. So I'm not totally against it. And can you clarify, you said sometime the end of September to October, so like a month?
Yeah, it's about a month. I might argue six weeks. I couldn't, no one could remember exactly when the lights were brought in last fall. They were brought in a little bit late. I know there were a couple of practices. See, I don't, I don't coach, and I don't pretend to know a lot about football. My son happens to play and love the sport, and the group needed someone to steer the ship, so I volunteered to do it. So I got with the coaches. And again, I can recall picking my son up at a practice that ended around eight last year and thinking, you know, thinking at 7:30, this has to end momentarily. And, you know, they pressed on until eight, and, you know, the light showed up probably a week or two later than they should have. So again, I can't recall, you know, I think for, you know, so that we didn't shoot ourselves in the foot or get into trouble, I think we would request like, you know, the middle of September to the end of October. And obviously, if they, if they didn't need to be brought in, because, you know, we pay per week or pay per month on the unit, depending on how we get it. You know, we would get them as late as we could and get rid of them as quick as we could for that reason as well. I think we rented them from Sunbelt last year or Nation's Rent, I can't recall. But again, you pay per week, so we want to get them in there as late as we can and out of there as quick as we can. So yeah, so that's.
I'd be amenable to have them in there for the six weeks, and if it doesn't work out, if we get too many complaints, we just won't do it again. And I understand in terms of Karen's issue, so, but we're talking about Little River Park, not Stevens Field, so I'd be amenable to giving it a try, just to see how it works.
Comment from anybody else on this, who's here today?
I make mention about the lights at Stevens Field. This is awful.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you very much. So youth sports in the fall, everybody. Try and get on the fields around 5:30 and get off of them around 8 o'clock at night. You're not trying to go any later, but the sun sets so rapidly, the end of September, going into the end of October, the first week of November, that you need it just so that you can provide opportunity for these kids to have just the practice that they need. Anything can be put into place about lights and, because people don't go anywhere. That was my light tower, and I have no problem doing it. And the chief of police called me, and then I told everybody within our organization, and it came from there. So open chain of communication, and he had asked, and I sent an email out to everybody, and it ended rapidly. But having those lights in the fall literally takes care of all of these kids that they can have the time they want to go to, whether it's football or soccer or anything. So I would highly recommend that the select board allow people to do that and groups to do that, as long as it's off by 8 o'clock at night. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Yeah, I believe the police chief wants to speak.
Go ahead, Tom.
Just a couple of comments. One on Little River Park, obviously, the park is advertised as closed after dark. My only concern is, will it attract people other than who are there for the sporting events to be there after dark? So it's going to, that'll be something we'll have to monitor. And as far as Stevens Field, the main issue is that we had last year is the kids running around after dark in the parking lot over here at the safety complex. That's a huge concern when we have, you know, call firefighters who will And as far as Stevens Field, the main issue is that we had last year is the kids running around after dark in the parking lot over here at the safety complex. That's a huge concern when we have, you know, call firefighters who will come through this parking lot briskly responding to a call, our cruisers, et cetera. So that's, you know, that's got to be addressed if they're going to be over in that field. We just want it to be safe. We had one gentleman teaching his young daughter to ride a bicycle in our parking lot. You know, people have to understand that that's for emergency response vehicles. And they need to be aware of that.
Thank you very much. Anybody else would like to speak to the issue?
Miss, we need to hear from the rec department, John, I think.
Please. Larry?
Yeah. I don't see any issue with the lighting, but Steve Bullock and I met down at the park about a week ago or so to discuss the pickleball court and the issue of the football on the multipurpose field came up. And I guess my question would be, uh, football does put a lot of stress on field, we finally got that field looking really good. My question would be how much potential damage would be done to the field by running football on there? And if so, who's going to maintain that?
Good question.
Maybe Steve can speak to that.
Well, when Matt, when Matt Glode had asked me about football, I had said that we would try to keep them on the sheet field if the kids were younger. Because younger kids, obviously they weigh less, so they don't do as much damage to the field. And I wasn't too keen on having middle schoolers out there, but if they did, or if the fields were starting to wear, I was going to try to rotate them and maybe use the outfield or the baseball field or move them over to Mass Way. If we started running into damage problems. But the multipurpose field was going to be off limits 100% of the time there. I was never going to allow them on the multipurpose field.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Can I make one other comment?
Please.
With regard to the baseball field, I don't see that that would be a good idea using that for football practice. We put a lot of investment into that field for the use of baseball. And again, I would be concerned about potential damage to that field.
Well, it appears here we have two issues we're dealing with, whether football is a lot on the field to begin with and, or where it's being played and whether there's lighting to occur. So it's a double issue at this point. I'm still not enthusiastic about lighting, but I'm going to take a formal vote from the board. And what they're feeling is about lighting issues associated with football, they don't have to deal with the issue of when football to be played in what field. So my vote for lighting the field is no. Mr. Brown, what's your vote?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to say yes, John.
That's fine. Mr. Bugby?
A hesitant yes?
Hesitant yes, it's a yes or a no?
Oh, it's a, is it a hesitant yes in terms of, for me, it's hesitant yes because I'm looking at it as a trial. If it goes well, that's fine. If it doesn't, I'm going to kick myself for voting yes, so.
No, I agree. I, I think we should let it, let it have at least a trial and let's see if any issues pop up and we go from there.
Next thing I want to deal with is the, I think Larry brings up a very important point, where football is to occur. I think, I guess I'd like to leave it with Steve, who is, watches the fields, that he makes a formal decision where the ball can occur. And I'm not enthusiastic about being played on the baseball diamond to begin with either. So maybe that should be a restriction.
Can we ask Tom and Matt where they're planning on having the football, where could they play?
Matt, do you want to speak first?
I think one of the important things for you to speak on a little, Tom, is your knowledge of the wear and tear that the program has put at Woodridge over the years that is historically a very wet facility as well. Would you want to kind of let them know how football has impacted that facility?
Well, I mean, I was thinking about this as, as they were talking about the wear and tear on the football diamond and I, you know, I mean, I know it is a wet facility and I have not seen, my son has played football now since he was in third grade and he's going into seventh grade. I've coached baseball here in town for eight or nine years. So I've actively coached over at the Woodridge baseball fields for the past number of years and have witnessed football over at Woodridge and have never seen any, you know, any, any harm done to those fields. You know, I mean, it does get soggy out there, you know, it is a muddy facility. You know, I don't, I think it's more the coaches that don't enjoy coaching in the mud as opposed to the kids playing in the mud. But frankly, I haven't personally experienced any damage to those fields. I'm not sure, you know, I grew up playing soccer and we used to, we, we grew up playing on our baseball field. And I know that we, we wrecked the baseball field in the fall. So I'm not sure there's a gross difference between soccer and football when it comes to, you know, the wear and tear put on the turf itself. That certainly wouldn't be, I mean, but again, I'm not taking care of the fields. That would not be my concern. I haven't, I haven't checked out the multi-use field. I've been out there and checked out the front field and thought, boy, you know, I just think to myself, you know, again, as, as a parent, as a lead resident, as a parent of someone who just loves football, I'm just trying to foster that as best I can. And I go out there and I, and I look at these boys, you know, who, who play in this, you know, ORYA football. And the group has done tremendous work in the past few years. One, just getting the program established. Two, finding them a home to play in high school. And my kind of job that I put on myself is to find, or find a home for ORYA football. I feel like baseball's got a home, you know, soccer's got a home. I just feel like this group of kids really need the home. And Little River Park is a phenomenal field. And I just feel, you know, we go to these other communities, local communities that have great football fields, you know, you go out, whether it's, you know, whether it's, you know, Greenland or Portsmouth or Exeter or Dover. They, you know, it's, it's home of, you know, the little green wave. And I just feel like if we had, you know, the home of ORYA football, and, and I'm not saying that it has to be Little River Park, but we need to start. You know, again, I, I didn't grow up playing football. You know, I'm not, I don't pretend to know much about it, but I do know that there are a handful of kids in this town that do love it. It's a great home for them and I, and I don't understand why they don't get the same treatment that other athletes get. So I don't know if I've answered your question regarding the turf, but you know, I, I am speaking on behalf of the AG at ORYA and the football group. And, uh, you know, we just, we feel like, and there's, you know, three of our head coaches are all lead residents and they're all going, I don't know why we can't play there. I don't know why we can't play there. And, uh, you know, I, I'm a lead resident and like I said, our three, three of our head coaches are lead residents and they're all saying the same thing. And, uh, you know, we've got a meeting tomorrow night and I was hoping to bring them some good news, so, you know, we'll see what happens.
I guess what I'm hearing at this point, Tom, the selectmen, that obviously we're going to prove the lights. But however, no later than eight o'clock. And I guess at this point, I'm going to have to leave it with Steve, who watches the fields to determine how much damage would occur or not. So this is a trial basis. To see how, please.
Chairman Lacourse, I believe Chief Nemitz wants to speak.
Go ahead, chief.
I don't want to get off topic too much, but we were talking about Stevens Field. I think the lights down there just need to be adjusted. They were pointing at the building, they just need to go end to end from the field away from the building. I think that will help out visibility down there. The other thing is, is that I don't know if it's ever been discussed, but shutting that road right down towards our parking lot, because like Tom said, um, we have a lot of parents that park out in front of our flag that are in our parking lot. Then they start kind of backing up, there's cars that come down that side street all the time. They go out the parking lot the wrong way. So, um, I know that parking lot's fairly small, football teams and other sports have bigger, you know, bigger team numbers, bigger roster. So there's a lot of parents in and out of there with the cars and I think that would just give them that space on that roadway to use it as a parking lot as well. And then we can block them off from our parking lot possibly.
For football, are you restricting yourself to Little River Park?
Yes, I believe so. So, so the thing, you know, we, uh, and I think the biggest reason is we really need a spot to say, this is our home. And I think it's really twofold. One, it's, you know, where are we going to land the equipment? And two, where are we going to land our lights? You know, and we're not really interested in getting lights for multiple facilities.
So let me ask a question about the lights. When you bring them, do you bring them in every time you play or where do you house them?
No, 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 we pick them up again, uh, they're rented, you know, again, either on a weekly basis or a monthly basis. And they get, you know, they get towed in on a pickup truck. You know, it's like, it's like you're towing in a log splitter or a small trailer. You know, they get, they get towed in and then they get, you know, balanced on their feet and stood up and. Yeah, so, yeah, they don't, they don't show up daily with the footballs, show up for a month and a whack.
Don, can I ask him a question?
Sure.
In terms of the football, how many people are we talking about? You know, in terms of, you know, how many kids and I assume parents show up too? How, how many people are we talking about?
Yeah, so I think this year we're, we're really hoping to increase the numbers a little bit. We're starting to drive a little bit earlier, but last year, um, I want to say that in the seven, eight program, there was somewhere around sixteen, seventeen kids. And then in the five, six program, there was probably about that many kids. And last year we did not have a flag or a three, four program. So this year, I mean, ideally we'd have four programs with about 20 kids in each program.
And can we get some clarification, John, in terms of which fields they're looking to use and which fields Steve will let them use?
That's exactly what I'm hoping. Little River Park and, but not Stevens, that's for sure.
Yep. So we need to kind of, I'm not, I'm hearing a couple of different things from different people. So I think we're all kind of thinking that we know what it is, but we haven't actually said it. So can we hear from Steve in terms of which fields he'll allow them to play on? And then from ORYA in terms of which fields, if any of those will be suitable for this particular practice?
Uh, Mass Way Field by the highway department and Sheet Field.
Which is the field in back of the multipurpose field, right?
Yes.
All right. So for Moist River Youth, are those two fields acceptable for doing football or not?
I'm sorry, so you call it, you call it Sheet Field?
They used to display sheep out back there during the fair, so it's called Sheep.
Okay.
Behind the multipurpose field. It's, it's in between the multipurpose field and the baseball field.
In between, okay. So that's the newest field, is that correct?
Yeah, that's the one way in the back.
Yeah, way in the back. Yeah, I think, I mean, I think obviously that would work for practices. You know, and we're not, we're not looking to have games out there next year. I think long-term it would be great. So no to the, no football on the multipurpose field then.
I think that's what Steve's saying.
Yeah, it's because it's turf and it doesn't stand up well, but even soccer being on it, we end up with big issues with soccer being on it. So no, no to football on that field.
Okay. Well, you know, again, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure that that would work. I mean, it is what it is, you know?
Let's look at it as an option.
Tom, I would suggest you bring it up with your advisory group tomorrow. The information gleaned from the meeting today and see if they still believe that that would be a better facility from Woodridge. I think there's been some great information here and I think that would help you guys steer your decision.
Yep, yeah.
But don't, don't forget about Mass Way Field either, that's not a bad field.
Yeah, no, it's not a bad field. And that's certainly something to consider as well. I think that, you know, that field is probably about the same size as Sheet Field. I haven't paced it off or anything, but it's probably about the same size.
Would lights be considered for Mass Way Field?
I'm not enthusiastic for lights at all, so let the other select people speak.
The, the Mass Road Field, the one by the school, I, I'm okay with lights. The problem I'm going to have with that field for you guys using it is where people park. That's the big thing for that field. You can park along the, the transfer station road, but for those number of people that you're having, there's not enough parking spaces. So I wouldn't be enthusiastic for that particular reason.
Of course, they can always ask the Oyster River School District to park in Mass Way.
They could do that, they could do that. That, just the issue with parking, you know, that would have to be solved.
Yeah, no, parking would be an issue there for sure. I know when we practiced at Woodridge, again, that's why Little River Park is such a beautiful spot, right? I mean, I dragged out, you know, you gotta, you know, as a football guy yourself, right? You walk out to that field, you see the parking lot, you know, the, the field's nice, it's flat, you know? Yeah, that'd be a great spot. Yeah.
Talk to your coordinators from the football and ask them about mud. It's my experience that football players love mud. Anytime you can get into mud, excellent. So I think they need to educate you a little bit, Tom.
Yeah, well, they, they have and they're, they're the ones, they're the ones requesting this change, not me.
Okay. So.
I think from ORYA's perspective, I'll just get with Steve once I hear what the rest of the football advisory group does. If we have the understanding that the Sheet Field would be accessible with lights, they'll have that information, discuss it. And then, uh, myself and Steve and potentially myself, Steve and Tom might just get together to discuss if it, if they are still interested in utilizing that facility moving forward.
Yeah, Tom makes a good point.
So it probably goes without saying, but I just want to throw it in there that this is all completely dependent upon what happens in the fall with COVID and what the governor decides to let everybody do, because right now you can't play football.
Right.
It would also be dependent on the MOU as well. They would be starting after August 1st.
Correct.
Exactly. Good discussion, thank you very much on this item.
All right.
Thank you. All right, we're in the same area, item number three. You got Joss talking about maximum velocity.
You're muted, Joss.
Thanks, Steve, I appreciate that. Obviously with the association for, uh, what the governor has enacted for amateur youth sports, we would like to be able to practice down there, starting on Wednesday. The piece of paper that I had filled out was for the back Sheet Field. And it sounds like Steve doesn't want us on that, so I can move to the multipurpose field without any issues, Steve? If that's what you would like me to do?
Yeah, it feels in really good shape right now, so I don't see any issues with it.
So I can do that. I would actually like to use it Monday through Friday from 5:30 to 7:30 at night. And that's, and I would use that to the second of July. And I potentially would use it for another three weeks after the fourth of July weekend, but I would come back to the board on that one. And let you guys know.
Comment from the board?
Joss, if you're switching fields, the multipurpose field has a fee, you understand that though, right?
I do.
Okay.
Would it be waived because I can't use the?
I don't, I don't, I wouldn't, so.
All right.
It goes by the field, so. I'm okay with his suggestion.
With the fee, of course. Mr. Brown?
No, I'm fine. I'm up, you know, for me, it's the, let Steve and Larry, they're, they're the parks and recreation guys. Let's let them sort it out.
Larry, are you still there? Is he, is he there?
Yep, I'm still here.
You have any issues?
I don't have any issues.
Thank you very much. I guess at this point, you're allowed to proceed by using the multipurpose field. I guess you said when did you start, Wednesday?
Yep. And we would use it Monday through Friday from 5:30 to.
7:30. All right, that sounds good to me. And we got both selectmen, all the selectmen agreeing at this point, Joss. Anything else?
Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else before I close, item three on Little River Park? All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to item four. Tom, Stevens Field, Chief of Police, a request of purchasing new computers.
We seem to be experiencing, experiencing IT issues here. First it was the copier. Now it's all the desktops. The issue we're running into is we've become so busy and the more photos that we have to store in the computer, the more property that we have to enter. It's become an issue of slowing the, the computers. It's become an issue of slowing the, the computers down to a crawl. Spoke to Steve Gagnon. He thought possibly we could upgrade the RAM. Uh, currently they're only at four gigabytes. We looked at that and when he came in, he looked at the computers, these were all replaced, uh, early on when I first became chief. So about six years ago, they're all operating at Windows 7. And after discussing it with Steve, it didn't seem prudent to invest money to upgrade the RAM in each one of these. Uh, when they're actually outdated as it is, because everybody's operating off of Windows 10. We have nine workstations. One of them is in an interview room, doesn't get used frequently. So we could take the newest of what we have now, which is one of Robin's workstations and put that in there and then replace the other eight. Steve was able to get us the computers, um, for $1,149 each. These are all-in-one desktops. Uh, so it's $9,912 to replace them all. Um, it's looking right now, I should be able to, uh, fund that out of my, my current budget.
You have the money in your current budget?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. Are these, uh, $1,149, they come with cameras?
Uh, yes, similar to, you mean like the web camera?
Yeah, that's in the, I just.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure because it's, the way we're going, we live with these things. We need to have.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I can't believe you're still running on seven to begin with. That, there's no support for seven, so I'm glad you're switching to ten.
We stretched them out as long as we could, but like I said, the, the busier we get and the more property and photos we have to download, that's really starting to bog it down.
So what happens to the old ones? Do you just donate it out or?
Yeah, I was going to check to see if any other department needed them, you know, the, the highway department needed them or the transfer station, something like that. Who's not going to be utilizing them to the extent that we do. Um, physically, they're all in good shape. You know, they're not damaged or anything. So that was my hope, is to offer them out to anybody in town here.
Do you clean them yourself or somebody else professionally cleans them?
Well, we typically, I mean, Bill's been coming in, but we typically take care of our own workstations.
Oh, yeah, I mean, making sure there's nothing confidential on laptops.
Oh, yeah, no, Steve would take care of that.
Okay, just want to make sure. I have no problem with that. Um, Mr. Brown?
I'm fine with it as long as we don't have any, uh, compatibility issues. We're, we're sure of that relative to software, et cetera.
And, uh, let's see, Mr. Bugby?
I have a question, really. It's really for Julie.
Yeah.
We have a computer replacement plan, I believe, so these computers are not on that particular plan?
Uh, to be honest, I'd have to take a look at the plan.
No, because we put in money each year into, I don't remember the IT number in terms of the budget there, information technology to replace computers. So I would assume their computers are on that list too, so. I, I would want to know in terms of, do we have plans to replace those this year? Should they have been replaced last year? Do we put money in for that? I'm just trying to see if we're, we can, you know, save something in the next upcoming budget or not, so.
I, I know in 2014, when I replaced them, they came out of my budget, my operating budget.
So really the computer replacement plan doesn't include police department? Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, it's showing that the police department was getting replacement computers in fiscal year 21.
So it's in the budget coming up?
Yeah, although not at that price point, but yes.
So how much was in there and how many were to be replaced?
Uh, 850 each, seven computers.
So it's like 5,000, a little over $5,000?
Right.
Fifty-six, fifty-seven hundred. All right. All right.
Mr. Brown? Therefore, I move to authorize the purchase of all eight 001 computers for back bay networks as quoted.
A second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion on this?
No.
Like it's a good investment. All them faithful.
I, I.
Roll call.
Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Smith, LaCorch, yes. Motion carries. Congratulations, Steve.
Thank you.
Anything else, Chief?
That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Public Works Manager, Steve, you have a couple items. Go ahead.
All right, I believe the first one is for paving. We put the bids out to pave Caverno Drive. Mitchell Stepping Stones East, Stepping Stone South and Stepping Stones West. Tomb Lane and Recycling Center Road, um, and Pike Industries came back at the cheapest per ton and the cheapest on the overall project. So their price per ton was 69,000, or $69.22 and their overall was 191,739.40. So I'm, I put it on the agenda because I didn't, I wanted to discuss what you guys wanted to do when I put this forward. It was before that email come out from NHMA the other day, so about being funded, according to the governor. So just looking for your input on what you would like to do. Obviously, I'd like to award Pike the bid if we were going to go through with paving because they were the cheapest overall. And, um, if we wait, we risk them saying no and then having to rebid it. And then we could be up around 77 or 78 dollars a ton. That's the only risk that we run if we hold off to the springtime to wait.
Administrator, what do you think the budget's looking like?
Well, uh, as you saw from the last, uh, budget to actual report, it, right now it looks like we might be putting a healthy amount back into the unassigned fund balance. Um, Mr. Bullock is correct that the information that we received on Friday from NHMA suggests that the state is going to come through with the anticipated funding. The only thing we don't know right now is what the tax revenue looks like. And realistically, we won't know anything about that until the end of July. I mean, I know we certainly have been getting tax revenue in. But I, I'd be more comfortable knowing where we stand compared to a year ago in terms of tax revenue.
Comment from anybody?
Oh, Linda has comments.
Linda?
I have to figure out how to unmute. Um, I actually did look at the tax revenue, um, versus last year for the month of May, end of July, of June. So for the month of May, it was down about 100,000 compared to last year. I had it written down, but I think it's upstairs, but, um, so for the month of May, I can't, I can't remember. I know it was 100,000 dollars. I can run upstairs and, and, and get the information. But it is, it is down from last May to this May. But I can also let you know, um, I can bring another report today to let you know where we stand.
Well, my consensus at this point is I'd like to proceed with the paving. I want to go up to that bid. I think we're going to be okay. Hundred thousand dollars is not a big chunk in a revenue budget that we deal with. And, uh, you know, it seems like it's a pretty good price per ton at this time. What do the other select people feel?
Um, I'm not that optimistic, John. My, I would like us to wait for a little bit and I'm not sure what the paving window is. Maybe Steve can tell us, but I would like to wait until after the end of July to find out how things are coming in. If it looks okay, I'm perfectly fine with it. But if we're going to be short, uh, this is one place where we can possibly, you know, not have to let people go uh, to make our particular expenses. So I'd rather wait and see. And maybe Steve can tell us what that window for paving is. If there's a paving window that's, you know, September and October, or is it definitely has to be the spring and the summer?
It, um, I think we put in the bid when we sent it out, it had to be done by the middle of September. You can go to the end of September and that's about the max. Because according to how um, the rules we follow, you have to put it down when it's a certain temperature and rising for top. So you need it to be a certain temperature, air temp wise, or it won't stick right and compact right. So we can, the end of September is, is the latest we could go.
So if, uh, so if we were to tell you maybe like, say, the second week of August that it's a go, would that still work for you or is that too late?
It depends. It would depend on their schedule. Is, if I wait that long, I might not be able to get it done in time and then I, I just might not be able to get it done in time for the temps.
Okay, understood.
Mr. Brown?
Hello?
Yeah, your opinion?
Uh, yes, I have an opinion. I thought Scott started off, I thought by waiting till the end of July and I'm all for that. I think it's a good idea, but I wouldn't go past that.
I think, I think the, the date that I picked is just so we know when revenues are coming in. If it, if it's according to, maybe Linda and, and Julie can tell us, but if it's the end of July is like the latest, I'm perfectly fine with that too. I just want to see to make sure majority of that revenue coming in for that first tax bill, we've received it. We're getting like, you know, we're down like 20, 30 percent. That's going to be a problem for us. That's $7 million. So that's my concern.
Let's go for George.
So if I call them tomorrow, if I call them tomorrow and tell them that I, to put me on the schedule for the middle of August, and I can still cancel it if I have to, would that be?
That would work as long as, yeah.
Can, can you, I'm sorry, Steve, but can you really, can you really do that if you cancel without any kind of cancellation charge? If they're going to gear up to, from a supply point of view?
I mean, they already, they already have the supply because they sell it to everyone. I mean, it technically, I think if we award Pike the bid tonight, you're looking at the same thing because you awarded them and then backed out, you know what I mean?
No, I understand. I'm concerned that though they, they would, they would hold that looking for a mid-July start. And then all of a sudden we would say, well, sorry, but, but that's not going to happen. That's all. I'm just wondering what, uh, what the reaction would be, but.
Uh, the only way to know is to talk to them. I don't, I've never been in this position. I have no idea what um, they'd say. I'll just, I'll talk, I gotta talk to them tomorrow anyway, so I'll talk to them tomorrow and see what they say.
What I believe is that you talk to them and then the next meeting, uh, you can report back to us and they might have further discussions.
Yeah, I mean, I can hold the, I can hold them off as long as I possibly can.
Uh, Linda wants to speak.
Please. Linda?
Yep, I'm new, yep. Um, I just wanted to say, uh, at the next meeting, I can tell you exactly, but, um, I would say by the second week in July is when, if we're getting it, when the majority of the money is in.
Okay.
Second or third week, you know, then the rest just kind of trickles.
Good information. This gives us the window to work with. So let's keep this on the burner for now and see what the Pike says.
John, can I ask Julie a question?
Please.
Julie, in the contract that we have with these paving companies, isn't there something in there that if we can't afford it or something, monies don't come in or something? Is there a way to get out of that particular?
There, just putting it out to bid doesn't obligate us, but if we sign a contract with Pike, then we're obligated.
So in terms of, in that contract, is there any language in terms of, you know, physical existence or something like that, that we don't have the money to pay them? Nothing?
Not really, no. Once we sign the contract, we're committed.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, everybody know what's happening? Any other comments?
I have one comment. So where, the possibility it may happen um, with the email that we've gotten is I've held on and not gone and bought three-quarter inch crushed gravel because we, or it wasn't technically essential and we were told not to, or to cut back on spending. If we're going to pave roads and there's a possibility we're going to pave roads, I need to go buy gravel in order to have it to put on the sides of the road to back the edges up. And that's typically what we've done is the budget before the end of the fiscal year, we stock up on three-quarter inch gravel. So can I go buy gravel?
How much is gravel?
It is $13 a yard from Hartman over at Noble Farm. That's the cheapest price around.
And so how much is altogether?
I'd probably end up spending like $4,500 on gravel.
I don't see that as an issue. I think my end, you should move forward. Anybody else? I don't want to get caught short by not having proper materials. We do go ahead in July.
Yep, if it's coming out of this year's budget, you know, I'm okay with that. If it's next year's budget, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
No, it's this year's budget.
I'm fine with that.
All right.
You okay, Mr. Brown?
I'm fine with it.
All right. You got another item there, sir?
Yeah, I was, I was approached by, um, a couple town employees about the bushes out front of the town hall and how big they were and overgrown and how there's window boxes that are buried behind them. Um, and I was just looking for permission before I did it to rip the bushes out and then take surplus material. So like take the compost from the dump and make flower beds out front instead of those big bushes. And those big bushes would have to come out anyway, um, for the town hall renovation because they're so close to the building. So it was a beautification project for the front of the building, more or less.
I think it's a wonderful idea. We love to beautify town hall as much as we can. Any comment from anybody else?
Yeah, but I'd like to ask Steve a question. He, he referenced this place called the dump. What is the dump, Steve? Because we don't have a dump.
Steve, it's the, it's the transfer station. We transfer materials.
Okay, all right, all right. I think it, I think it's a nice idea. All right.
You okay, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. Steve, when are you going to remember that? But you know how sensitive it is about the word dump.
You were, I saw you earlier today and I called it the transfer station. It must just be when he's around me.
I thought you were saying Durham Marketplace. We used to call that the dump.
I, I still do call that the dump.
Yeah, there we go.
John and Carrie, when we do his evaluation, this is going to be prominently in his evaluation.
We're going to get a little, a little quiz when he walks in, a little paper quiz. Circle, where do we call? There we go. Anything else, Steve?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Okay, Julie Glover, you have the floor.
So, number of us had a Zoom meeting last week to discuss reopening town buildings. We primarily focused on town hall and the annex. Uh, the annex seems relatively easy. Um, town hall, not so much. And to be honest, the consensus seemed to be if we had to follow the universal guidelines and what appears to be good practice, we, we can't reopen town hall in terms of having multiple employees working here at the same time. Um, one of the other things that came up in discussion was possibly using the building, leasing the building across from Sonny's. So Karen Rossi and I are going to take a tour of that building tomorrow and just, you know, to assess whether that might even be possible. The other issue with that is the ability of the select board to lease property. I have a question in to NHMA relative to that. Um, I do know that the select board would not be able to enter into a multi-year lease. So I'm not sure exactly how we would structure that if we wanted to move forward with moving into an entirely different building. The upside to that is that while we would be in another building, The upside to that is that while we would be in another building, work could be done on town hall. So that's, that's pretty much where we left it at the end of our meeting.
Oh, it's an interest. I read all the material that you've got from Primax and everything else and, and I agree with you. It's almost impossible to have full protection inside town hall the way it exists. I'd like to accelerate this a little bit. We're concerned about our employees and existing. Accelerate the program, uh, to maybe. Thank you. That helps, helps me a lot. Listen to the airplane going overhead. We've tried several times to get a campus. We tried twice and it has not worked to get a municipal campus per site. And of course, the library has now pulled out and they're running on their own. Maybe COVID-19 is an opportunity, as was just suggested by the town administrator, uh, that we should probably move forward and think about, or actually at this point, can we pull some funds somewhere to get somebody in, an architect who knows what's going on in this particular area? How we could update, renovate or convert existing town hall? So it's protected from COVID-19 or other such pandemics that would exist down the road. But at the same time, if we can do that, why not pay for an assessment to actually assess it for remodeling, renovating, whatever the term you want to call it, recording it, uh, to a meeting place, well, excuse me, the actual municipal building. Because right now it's just a meeting place with basic temporary walls strong around everybody. So it'll never be used as a protection zone for COVID-19 or actually letting public in during COVID-19 type. And we know this is going to go on for at least a year, maybe two years at this point, even though they said vaccination might be available. Time, what I've learned about this thing that viruses do mutate and who knows what could come up next. So I guess I'm opening floor. I'd like to be able to discuss, can we find some money somewhere and from some, uh, fund to maybe have the town administrator move forward to try to identify, uh, an architect who can come into town hall. To redesign it as a municipal building that has protection from COVID-19 or other such pandemics. I like to combine the two because I think it's worthless. Just say, let's put up some barriers and stuff because of COVID-19 and make it more applicable for employee space or inviting the public in. The annex, I do understand it's a smaller cost. It's close to being done. It requires a door and a few other things to make it reasonably useful, uh, during a COVID-type activities. So I'm, uh, and I think at one time Selectman Brown pushed very hard to get the town hall, uh, you know, renovated as a, you know, a useful building. So I guess I'm asking the other two Selectmen, can we move forward to get assessment on as quick as possible? Uh, to see what the opportunities are. We do have funds that exist in some accounts. Uh, the capital building maintenance, I mean, the capital building improvement account. And there's other accounts that we aren't be able to draw on to maybe do something about this as suggested by the town administrator, why we're in some other office, place else to actually renovate it and make it useful. So that's my opening salvo. So I'm opening the floor. I know that was a lot.
Yes, yes, it was.
Yes, it was. Thank you. That means somebody was listening to me.
Well, I'd like to hear from Scott only because I don't know if there's any remnants from the TCVC as to what kind of intentions they had, uh, relative to old town hall or, you know, renovating the current town hall.
Thank you.
There's, there's, there's two issues there, which John, you, you highlighted them. One is getting the people out of the structure. Where do we move them? Chief Johnsfield brought up that Jim Daly had told us that Profit Key, the building that's across from Sunny's was available. Um, I had a question for the town administrator. We came into her long-term, but what if Mr. Daly was to give us the month-to-month lease or something like that? Could we do that? But the first issue is getting people out. And if we can figure out that particular thing, then determining what we want to do with the structure itself. Cause we have plans to turn it into a meeting space. So we'd have to go back and, you know, see what the particular rules are for making a, you know, virus-free COVID, you know, facility like that. Um, so those are two different things, so.
Yes, they, and I agree, they are two different things. And one is depending on the other. We do have to get the people out to modify it.
Yes.
But I no longer see town hall as a meeting place. It, town hall will be the municipal building of the future. I, you know, twice we tried to get the campus, uh, you know, to make it a new municipal building and so forth. And it doesn't look like it's going to go.
Well, the, the thing is, I think the last one, and you guys can argue amongst yourself about it, but I think the school had something to do with it. People are just feeling poor. Um, so I think, you know, this is, this is a way to go. Barrington did this, you know, many years ago. They moved to another building. And then they used the, the annual cost of that rental that building to pay for a bond to do their facility and they got it passed that way. So maybe that's something we can do. I don't know. But first off, we got to find a place to stick them. Can we make that particular facility, you know, something so that people can get back to work? So people can come in and do their registration? I was there with Julie today and Linda and Liz, I think it was Liz, sorry, had a whole stream of people, you know, coming in, you know, and Julie was out there answering questions about burn permits and all kinds of things. So at some point, people want to get back to using the town hall to do those particular services and we have to accommodate that as best we can.
I agree. We need to, we, we have got to get started on town hall some way or another. We have got to get started. If Julie, uh, and, uh, looked at the building and come up with a way that they can use the building and, and, uh, vacate, vacate old town hall, then let, let's get started on old town hall. As far as, as far as the COVID prevention, that's all going to be a matter of air handling and everything else. So that's going to be, that's going to be, uh, embedded in the renovation process.
Let me, uh, talk a little bit more. I'm enthusiastic about the discussion. Wouldn't it be prudent though? I mean, I really want to move on this. We still need to get somebody to come in and make a preliminary assessment and a preliminary design. Of course, we've assessed everything to death for over several years. Spent a lot of money assessing, but now we're asking to take the existing town hall and renovate it to a useful space as municipal building. Wouldn't it be prudent to try to identify somebody to come in and do the assessment now at this point? To at least get an idea what the cost function is, so we can start working on looking for ways to fund it.
I think that would be predicated on what exactly are you looking for? Do we have criteria? That needs to be met for, you know, a COVID-19 type space? I, I don't know if that exists anyplace. If it does.
I think Karen Rossi wants to speak to that perhaps?
Please, Karen.
So if we had, the COVID-19 requirements, it's my understanding, would be fulfilled if we had what we're trying to achieve with a new building, individual office spaces, a hallway, you know, not like a free-for-all. So all we need basically, and the chiefs can please help me out here and Julie, is individual office spaces, well, you know, so the ceiling, the wall goes all the way to the ceiling so the germs don't flow around. Just basic things. And I, I firmly believe that we could handle, us department heads and obviously a selectman if they want to, can meet with an architect to see if that's something we could accomplish easily instead of forming a committee and getting a committee involved just to get this started and, and moving along.
And actually, we're, we're saying the same thing. I mean, uh, I think for our town size, I don't see the number of employees increasing. Uh, you know, over the next, you know, 20, 30 years, that's for sure. It's going to be about the same number of people inside uh, the actual facility, which includes right now what the town administrator, town secretary, financial administrator. We got the assessment comes in once in a while and welfare, is that correct?
Yes.
Right? So that's the, the number of people that exist on that particular floor. Of course, the attachment with respect to the tax collector as well. So yes, I agree. I guess we have two parts to this. Number one, we have to ask, since Julie is going to meet with the people across the street and see if that is physically available for us and see if it's reasonable at this point. And if it is reasonable, we can have a discussion about, um, I guess renting at month-to-month at this point. But I'm looking for permission to move forward at this time. Can we identify or have the town administrator find out somebody to come in and do a formal assessment for basic offices and to meet the demands of the health officer in the town of Lee.
Well, a couple of things. I don't know if you, have you been into the Profit Key building before? Any of you? No? Yeah, because it's got, maybe Karen can do it too, but there's a lobby out front and there's some offices and there's a central hallway that goes back to a large, large open area. So I assume you could continue those particular offices going further back. Maybe have the selectmen's office and, you know, the town clerks out front in that lobby area. But I think that's something that they have to see, to see if that can work out. In terms of your other question, John, the firm that we hired to do the assessment, they have all the drawings and stuff. If we just ask them to create a particular structure so that there's enclosed offices and stuff, that's something they can do. So they're not starting from square one. Um, so that's something that's possible. But like we said, the first thing is to get them out. So Profit Key works, that's the first problem solved.
Alright.
I believe Chief Nemeth has something to say.
Go ahead, Chief. Um, just jumping on Selectman Bugsy's comments, it's a 5,000 square foot building. There's four different bathrooms. Um, there's multiple exits. So you can have one way in, one way out, which a lot of businesses are doing that. Um, parking is, uh, it does have its own parking lot, separate. Um, what else? Like you said, it does have the office space. It has the lobby up, up front. Um, you could have multiple areas for copiers so that not everybody's using the same one and in the same area.
And can I ask the chief a question? Chief Johnsfield? Sorry, we got two chiefs. Chief Johnsfield, because since the board asked the TCVC to look into this, one of the things I'm thinking about in terms of the, the Profit Key building is in terms of egress and entrances, you know, getting in and out off 125. I see trucks going in and out of there all the time and it, sometimes it's kind of scary. You have a truck pull out in front of you and you're traveling, you know, up there and you got tractor trailer right in front of you. Is there something we can do in terms of, you know, when you come out of that parking lot, you can always go toward the circle or something? It, it just seems like a dangerous place. Chief, you're muted.
You can, you can actually exit on the George Bennett Road.
Oh, will they allow us to use that?
Yes.
Alright, because the sign that says, you know, only, you know, measured progress or something like that?
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm sure Jim would have no problem, uh, if that's a concern, allowing people to enter and exit from that road.
Okay. So are, do you have any concerns about entering and exiting off 125 or am I just?
I don't, uh, you know, when Profit Tools was there, they had a number of employees that, you know, uh, entered and exited, so, um, I don't, I don't really see an issue with that. Um, I guess it wouldn't be, you know, any, any place we move, you know, if we went up to the market basket, you got people having to come out on a roof or, um, you know, we're going to have those concerns. But where we do have the availability of, uh, coming in off of George Bennett, uh, is helpful.
Alright, thank you.
Scott Nemeth?
Okay, Scott.
I agree with the chief. There is a lot of trucks that come in and out of there, but you do have, uh, entrance coming off of George Bennett Road that people could use, I would assume. Uh, talking to Jim Daly, he'd probably let us use that. So that's another, uh, area that they can come in and stay away from that.
The other, the other I say, it has central air, has a generator. Has all the amenities that you would need.
Karen, you have some?
That requirement was actually the no, the no trucks and no cars, measured progress only under George Bennett was a planning board requirement.
Okay.
So we, that's not a problem.
Oh, okay.
So do we, uh, Scott, you had mentioned that there was, uh, a previous firm that did all the work with respect to, um, you know, the, the campus that we're working on. And they are very comfortable, I would imagine at this point, to do an assessment and a redesign of town halls?
Uh, it just costs money, John. That's the only thing, so.
Do we have money?
We have as much money as we think we have, but yeah, you can always use money from the, the, uh, town buildings trust fund. We did put extra money in this particular year for the, uh, town hall. So you could use some of that to do the design and it's, they already have everything. So it's just, you're just asking them renovate the structure and then put, you know, floor-to-ceiling partitions in. So that's going to be additional cost, but you know, it's not going to be some firm coming in, starting from ground one because they're going to have new measurements and stuff. This firm has all that stuff already, so.
So I guess I'm, I'm pushing pretty hard at this point. Number one, Julie, you're going to follow through by looking or take your entourage to look at this other facility.
Correct.
The second part is, I'd like to go ahead and move forward with this idea of having the firm that was already used. Find out how much the cost function would be rather soon. Can we ask the town administrator to do that?
Should. What, what part is the TCVC going to play in this? You've asked us to do a charge and come back to you. So it sounds like.
I'm trying to move it faster.
That's, well, then we need to tell the TCVC not to do anything, to be done or whatever, because these two things are replicating themselves and that, I don't think that's what we want to do.
No, I don't want to do that either. Actually, the TV, TCVC is going to sunset, correct? At the end of June?
Uh, yep, 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 definitely.
And I would say at this point TCVC has done a great job, but since it's only walls and air conditioning and doing the floor, uh, pretty much the employees inside the town of Hall and, and also the board of selectmen has a pretty good idea what's happening in the town hall itself. Probably let the TCVC sunset at this point and have the town administrator contact, uh, the, um, the previous firm to see what they can cost estimate to modify town hall for, you know, the needs of the health officer as well as, you know, petitions for privacy and everything else required for, you know, municipal town hall.
Okay.
Mr. Brown, are you okay with that?
I am.
Okay, so we're going to sunset the TCVC and, uh, Julie, could you construct a letter of thank you to all the people who volunteered in TCVC for all their particular work they've done over the years?
Yes.
I appreciate that. Then next part, I'd like to have the town administrator move forward to contacting the firm and, um, explaining our needs at this time and find out, we get a, you know, a cost estimate, not a hard contract, but a cost estimate to uh, turn, uh, the existing town hall into a newer municipal building and renovate it to meet the needs of the health officers, whether the employees of the town.
Okay.
Is there, should we include the annex as well at this point?
Uh, I think we should.
Any comments?
I think we should.
Alright, let's move forward, including the annex. Do, is there areas we can pull funds from, Julie?
Uh, as Mr. Bugsy said, the, um, town building capital reserve fund.
So there are funds available. Is anything left in TCVC?
The TCVC didn't really have a budget.
Yeah.
So we do have funds available. And Scott, since you've been working on this so long, can you give me a guesstimate? I won't hold it to you. What do you think? Assessment of the cost and a redesign plan?
Well, since, since this particular, if you're going to use the same firm, which it sounds like it would make sense to do, they've done all the major stuff. They've got pricing for all the major stuff. What you're really asking them to do is to take that big room that's in the town hall and cut it up into offices. So I, I don't think you're talking very much money. I don't, you're probably talking maybe $5,000, maybe. They, if you have a conversation with the principal and you tell him what you want, he can give you a general ballpark, but I don't think it's going to be very much because they got all the other stuff already. You know, the fixing the floor, fixing the utilities, you know, electrical, heating, air conditioning, stuff like that. So you're not asking them to do this big thing. It's really a small thing, so.
But I, I, I'm not as, I, I don't think there's been that much done to fix town hall and then just stick up some petitions. So I, I think there is going to be some money involved. Let's, let's get the, let's get the, uh, let's, let's let them get started. Let's let Julie and her team get started and then we'll, we'll get through it.
Now, now. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Carrie, I didn't mean that the, there was going to be no cost. Right now, we're looking about $300,000 to make it into a. we're looking at about $300,000 to make it into a meeting space.
Oh, okay.
I think you're gonna have to spend maybe $5,000 at the most, I think, to get the architect to put in plans for, you know, the different partitions and offices and stuff. And there's gonna be a cost to that. So maybe we're talking, maybe three and a quarter, maybe? Um, so...
That's what's my, I think about 350 to do it all, which is, you know, electric, plumbing, and so forth.
But the thing is, you're gonna have costs associated with moving those people out.
Yes.
Turning something in, the Profit Key Building, if we use that, turning that into something that we can use. So there's gonna be more than that particular cost to do the whole thing. So, and I think one of the things we should check on in terms of what that Profit Key Building needs, sounds like it's got major, um, utilities are all in place, but do we have to reconfigure offices and stuff? There's gonna be expense to that, so...
No, absolutely.
Okay, I think at this point, uh, Julie, you have your...
Yeah, I think Linda has something she wants to say.
I'd like to say something too, Julie, if I could.
All right, Linda, first.
The, um, the only comment I had was, when you're talking about the cost to, um, redo the, uh, town hall, is that there is, I, I don't know what they'll do with the town clerk's office, but obviously it's very small, and whether they make that into two offices or whatever, but, so there may be more costs to, I don't know, the walls or whatever. There's, um, I see additional costs there.
There's no, um, when I meant municipal building, it includes everything.
Right.
You're not ignored at this point?
Yeah.
Okay. I think we'll take everything into consideration at this time. Joff, you have the floor?
Yeah, Robin Wanderlich is an architect that lives in town that many people know, and he's done a lot of things like that, that he could potentially help, and he, he takes a lot of pride in what goes on with a small town, agricultural town that, that we are. And his wife's also a builder. So there's somebody else that, that you guys could reach out to.
Appreciate that input. The more the merrier. Any question, uh, Julie?
Uh, no. Thank you.
Thank you on that. I'm enthusiastic. It's, I think we all feel it's time to move forward and try to get the existing town hall into a useful facility for the future. Uh, and it might be some opportunities. Thank you on that. So, let's move on to the next subject. You've got the dog walk, dog waste?
Dog waste. So it continues to be a problem. Uh, so I think the police chief is, uh, coming up with a proposed ordinance, uh, relative to leashing dogs and so forth. So he may want to speak to that.
Please, Chief.
We're getting more and more complaints. Steve was down there the other day. Um, said there was a, a great deal of dog waste, and, you know, now we're talking about, um, children playing on those fields. And, you know, we can't keep paying our employees to go down and keep cleaning up after other people, uh, who aren't being responsible pet owners. And I've been noticing more and more on Neighborly and on Facebook, people complaining about dog waste not being picked up on the trails in town. So, you know, we've posted, uh, on all of our media platforms, that you have to pick up from, after your dogs, that, you know, there are signs, there are, um, the bags available. There's absolutely no excuse that it can't be picked up. Um, it's just, they just, people just don't want to. So, you know, in reviewing our, our ordinance, it, it needs to be freshened up a little bit, um, brought more in line. The state statute has changed RSA 466. So, but, you know, we need to have something that has more teeth, so to speak, for us to be able to enforce it. But it's almost getting to the point where it's gonna be easier to say, you know what, no dogs. Cause people just aren't listening. People are running into people that their dogs aren't on leashes, they're not cleaning up after their dogs. It's not something that we have the manpower to be down there and forcing.
I'm glad you brought that up, because after a conversation, we just had a little River Park about having, you know, young students playing on the fields, and, and, you know, and other people there as well. I mean, uh, I have no problem in banishing the dogs from the park. Let's see what the other select people have to say. Mr. Brown?
Uh, you were garbled there, so could you repeat that?
Uh, you know, and if, we just got through discussing, uh, Little River Park, about all the students that would be playing on there, whether it's football, and baseball, and all the other teams. And, uh, you know, I have no problem disallowing or not having dogs on the fields whatsoever. I don't think leasing does any good, because you can still leash, and a dog will still go to the bathroom, so it doesn't do any good to leash. And I want to get permission from the police chief to update, uh, the laws that we have in procedures for the town of Lee with the new RSA's. And, but at this point, I don't have any problem with banning dogs from the fields and the trails.
Okay, I agree.
Mr. Brown, now Mr. Bugbee?
Ask the chief a question?
Sure.
We're just talking about Little River Park, not the other town properties, like, you know, behind the library and stuff like that, correct?
Correct. Those, those are gonna have to be addressed at some point, but, you know, we, we're not having, you know, young kids running and rolling around on the, on the trails, like we will have at Little River Park.
Okay. And can you tell me in terms of, so let's say that we do say, you know, no more dogs at Little River Park. What's the, who's gonna monitor that? Who's gonna enforce that? So you're gonna be down there doing that too, right?
Right, but at least, once the, an ordinance is written, and there's a fine assessed to it, then, you know, if one of my officers happens to drive by and see a dog, it's not, oh, is that dog on a leash? Or it's just not supposed to be there.
Yeah. So what is the ordinance? So we need to put in, change the ordinance? There's nothing in place right at the moment to allow you to do this?
Well, yeah, it needs to, the wording needs to be more precise and more in line with the state statute.
I see. Is that something we can do, what, in the next week or two?
Yeah, I can have it for the next meeting.
Okay, all right. And there's fines associated with that?
There will be.
All right. And what, is there something, for instance, you guys aren't down there, somebody's down there, they see a dog, you know, running on, with a leash, or what, not with a leash? Can they call the police department, and you guys can go deal with that?
Yeah, it's, it's just like how we, we do, we deal with it in town, in somebody's neighborhood. If somebody's out for a jog, and a dog comes out, and isn't under the owner's control, um, we go out and we deal with it.
I understand. All right, I'm fine with it.
Let's proceed with the ordinance, and any other paperwork too? I guess, no, also it's associated with, uh, use of Little River Park to be no, no dogs whatsoever.
Yeah, we have to change signage, things like that.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion that we do Stevens Field too?
Sure.
I have no... Stevens Field has just as many landmines on it as Little River Park has in it.
Steve Bullock is 100% correct.
I have no problem with that. Mr. Brown?
Okay.
Bugbee?
All right.
Good. You got it.
I think Larry, I think Larry had something to say.
Larry?
Well, you've already voted on it, um, unfortunately.
Technically, we haven't.
Okay. Um, I certainly agree with the issue of the, um, animals on the fields. Um, I walk my dog on the trails, um, every day. I have to for my cardiac. A lot of people do. Uh, the trails are not so much the problem, but the open fields are. Uh, I've spoken to numerous people, um, when I walk my dog, uh, down there. And, um, you know, I even had one guy tell me that, you know, I'm not putting a leash on my dog, because it's not enforceable. Um, but we try to remind people, um, to, uh, to keep their dogs off the fields. Um, my suggestion, uh, would be to allow dogs on the trails until such time there is, there is an issue with waste on the trails. There is some, but not very much that I've seen. Most of the issue is on the open fields, uh, down below on Little River Park. So, um, I would, uh, I would...
I would be fine with that, because we're allowing the trails to, you know, we're not including the trails all behind the transfer station, all behind the church, things like that.
Well, what about the trails around Little River Park? Because, um...
That's what I'm saying. I wouldn't have a problem with keeping them, allowing them on the trails.
Yeah.
It's the fields that are the problem, because the kids are gonna be playing there.
I, I agree with you 100%. Uh, now, in, in doing that, I guess one, one question that I would have is, the trails loop around through Little, Little River Park. If you look at how they run, um, you know, would that, would that also preclude animals from being walked through the parking lot to connect with the other trails? Again, I, I would, my vision would be just keeping the dogs off of the playing fields, the open areas of the park, not the trails.
And that's where the problem is, and Steve and I have talked about it. Because it's just not the dog waste, it's the dog urine as well.
Well, yeah.
It's something that people can't pick up, obviously, but it is, it does destroy the grass.
It does. I agree 100%.
Also, it's not affecting the trails.
Right. And most dogs, most of the dogs, as, as I've seen, and I know my dog is trained the same way, that if they're, you know, they have to go, they go off the trail, not on the trail. And I have seen little, little waste on the trail.
I mean, we can, I can write...
I see more litter on the trail than anything else.
I can write the ordinance to address playing fields, something along those lines.
That would be my suggestion.
I'm good with that.
Yep.
Okay. Who is the...
One thing, Mr. Lacrosse. Tom, you said that you would write that to be the playing fields. What about where the pavilion is? Cause you, you obviously don't want them on the playground area. How would you write that, or...
Limit, limit them to the parking lot and trails.
Okay, that, that was, that was my suggestion.
Tom, at this point, we're gonna leave it up to the chief or anybody else he wants to talk to, to come up with an ordinance, and we can discuss it next time, and probably vote on it.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Julie, I think we're still on you.
Yes. So, uh, we had a request from a gentleman that wants to provide violin lessons in the pavilion, uh, twice a week. My recommendation to the board would be to not allow this, because we have a prohibition at Public Safety Complex from people using that facility and charging people for their services. So it seems to me that the pavilion would be a similar situation, where we would not want to allow people to use the pavilion and then charge money for their services.
Quite well made. I agree with the town administrator. Anybody else have comments? Eric Dunn, I guess we...
Hello? Do we, do we know, is he charging for this particular service?
Yes, that was, yes, he is a violin teacher.
Oh, okay.
And he can't, I don't know, he, he can't be inside, I guess, although it's only two people, so he can be. Um, but he wanted to use Little River Park.
All right. Yeah, if he's charging, no, we don't allow that, so...
Okay, so I guess it's a no so far. Can Mr. Bugbee have on it? Mr. Brown?
Well, you already have two votes, just go for it.
All right. Remember the equality statement you made a while back? I'm gonna stick you with it.
What a quality statement. I missed something. What was that?
It was on Little River Park, but let's move forward. All right, are we done on that?
Yeah, that's, that's everything I have.
Okay, next thing, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Do I have a second, Mr. Brown?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Mr. Bugbee, what's your vote?
Uh, I'm in favor.
Mr. Brown, what's your vote?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Lacrosse, I am also in favor. Motion passes. Obviously, we can't sign anything until it shows up. That should be taken care of. We're down to miscellaneous unfinished business. Any comments or business do you want to bring in front of the board?
Uh, just an issue, there was a, there's a, there's an issue with the Ma-Jones, um, Forest. Some people have been putting, there's a, there's a bridge that's been put in, and also a bench that's been put in, and a rope climbing thing. They'll then climb up the, the embankment. So the three members of the Conservation Commission did a walk last week, and they are concerned about it. So I just wanna bring this up to the board, so they're aware of it. Um, they're gonna be writing letters to the people who, um, live in the, uh, development next door, the Captain Parker. So, uh, I just want you guys to be aware of it. The, the, I don't really necessarily have a problem with the bridge per se, but they're putting things on town property, and they shouldn't be doing that. Um, the, the hill is what concerns me the most. Um, it's, it's a very steep incline, that's why they have the rope there to pull themselves up, and, uh, that's not good. So I just wanted the board to be aware of this. That's something the Conservation Commission is looking into and working on, so...
Yeah, that could be a liability issue for the town, couldn't it?
Oh, definitely.
Definitely at this point. Anything else?
No. Motion to adjourn, sir?
Julie, did you have anything?
No.
All right. What was that motion that I hear?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.